Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Sorry, I apologize for my tardiness this night of multiple events. But we thank you for being here. As you know, if you've been here with us before, this is our council town hall. The residents have an opportunity to either submit questions in advance or to submit them while you're here in the audience. What we will do is we will try and go quickly through as many questions as possible with the hope of getting through everything that has been submitted. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and kick us off. And I know Councilman Chapman is also in traffic, and so is Councilman Aguirre, so they may join us as we begin. All right, so the first question, I'm going to turn this to Councilman El Newby. And the question is, what is the impact to the future of Alexandria of the new administration?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us here in person and those who are watching online. So, of course, there may be several impacts. There are impacts happening right now. So there are the fiscal impacts, which we don't know yet, but we get about $50 million from the federal government, and that money essentially is in jeopardy. So we haven't yet had cuts, but if that happens, that would really impact our budget. That would impact the work that we do for our community, for our schools, for the most vulnerable among us, for keeping up with the state of good repairs for our systems and facilities and roads. So it certainly would be very impactful, and we'd have to figure out what we do at that time. Do we raise taxes? Do we cut services? We would have tough decisions to make. Now, we've built in some cushion in our budget that we just passed, but not $50 million. The other impact is, of course, the lawlessness of this administration and how they're treating our immigrant community, our minority communities, and the ICE raids that we've been seeing all around. Thankfully, it hasn't happened in Alexandria yet, but we don't know when it would happen. And unfortunately, a lot of our community are afraid. Parents are afraid to take their kids to schools, to show up at grocery stores, show up at churches. I'm hearing stories of people worried to go to the churches, to the food pantries, right, because they would be sitting ducks. It's just sad. And unfortunately, there isn't much that we can do in a situation where ICE shows up and tries to rounds up people in public. So it's certainly a very sad situation to be in. And this administration, the way they're approaching this inhumane approach that they're taking to immigration is certainly not the answer. So...
Thank you, Councilman El Newby. And if I could just add a few other numbers that I think are helpful to just paint a picture of the context that we are navigating here in the city. We have about 16,000 residents who are federal workers. We have about 3 million square feet of office space that is leased to the federal government. We have a ton, and we haven't been able to capture a full number, of government contractors who also depend on work through the federal government. And so in addition to the direct federal, I think, money that flows in and out through the city government, we're also worried about what this means for our residents in terms of job loss, life transitions, maybe moving away from the city, and sort of impacts to their quality of life. We have been partnering with Congressman Don Byer to host job fairs and other resource fairs. I can tell you the one that we did on May 3rd. We had 2,400 federal workers show up seeking jobs here in Alexandria. And so the numbers continue to grow. That was almost 500 or 600 more people than the fair that we held before. There is a website that we have put up on our website that outlines all of the different job opportunities we have, as well as resources related to food insecurity, housing, workforce development, small business support, childcare. But we will be continuing to watch this closely. This has implications for how we prepare for our future budget and just the overall economic conditions of our community. I did want to say, I meant to say this at the beginning, but I just needed a second to get my paper together. We have 12 different categories of questions, so I'm not going to stay within one bucket. I'm going to try and move around so that we can get as many questions as possible. Vice Mayor Bagley.
And I just wanted to note as well, for those who might not be aware, there was an online submission portal, and we received, I think, over 25 questions in that way as well. So just the questions before us are not simply those provided by the audience here, but might be some people streaming at home.
Thank you. Next question, and I'll just stay with you, Vice Mayor Bagley. All city council members are at large. Many residents feel that we have no representation since there are neighborhoods in which no council members live. Can we, as a city, have a referendum to change the way city council members are elected so that there is a ward system that would allow city residents to have a designated council member, a voice, who represents their localized interest?
Thank you. So we get this question at every town hall and often on the campaign trail as well. So I'm just going to first answer with sort of a process answer, which is a change to our electoral system would require a change to our city charter. So that's a process that involves the council taking action, action happening at the General Assembly, the governor signing off. So that process-wise is how it would have to happen. And I've asked the city attorney, Angela Turner, the registrar, to sort of help weigh in with a more sort of specific answer that we can provide that resident about the process side. But I did want to address what is more the heart of the question, which is about representation in the city. The question specifically sort of referenced neighborhoods. And to the extent we're talking about neighborhoods, I think we have over 35 civic associations in the city. So no matter how we had wards, we'd have to have 35, 40, I'm not sure how many wards to represent every neighborhood, if that's really what people are looking for, is neighborhood representation. I think the civic association format, to some extent, is meant to capture neighborhoods. And then the Federation of Civic Associations then captures sort of a reflection of feeding that uphill and where neighborhoods are coming from. So practically speaking, the concept of neighborhood representation will simply be challenging in any city of any size with the number of neighborhoods we had. And then to sort of tackle the other element of the question in terms of like representation, I'd ask sort of, you know, what is the problem that wards would try to solve at present? Because as I look at our current council, we have geographic diversity, we have owner-renter diversity. I think our council is equal parts owners and renters at the moment. We have equal parts west end, east end, central diversity. We have men, we have women, we have Muslims, we have Jews, we have Episcopalians. But, you know, sort of every protected class I can think of, from a legal perspective, is represented on this council, and every geographic part of the city is represented. And as I mentioned, renters and owners are represented. So I understand every point of view might not be represented, but from a legal-protected class perspective, there isn't historically a problem that needs to be solved. We have done a really beautiful job in this city of late of representing a council that looks and lives very similarly to our city. And so, you know, as I said, the process piece, yes, it requires a charter change. It would require action in the General Assembly and the governor. But I'll continue to reiterate what I think most of my colleagues believe is that our current system is working well to produce a city council that reflects the people who live, work, and visit our city.
Councilman McPike.
I appreciate that answer, particularly the process part, where we'd have to start with the council passing something, sending it to the General Assembly, and the sort of question about what problems would it solve. I also think it's worth discussing what problems would it create? Something that I've cited at previous town halls and discussed with people at the doors is, we have in this city problems the scale of which a local neighborhood can't address that require a citywide commitment of investment and time in order to get a handle on them. The most obvious is, of course, the flooding that affects Old Town, affects Delray and Rosemont. If we had, you know, wards in the city, and we had one representative representing Delray, and the mayor being elected at large, the cost of dealing with these infrastructure problems is going to run more than $1 billion over 10 years. And it's money that we've had to raise taxes on every resident of the city who uses water, effectively, everyone, to cover these costs. And the political pressure to get that done only exists because all seven of us represent the residents of this city who, when it floods, mostly in July, and sometimes in the waterfront on beautiful, clear days, we hear about it. We know it's a problem. People who we represent are having their homes damaged, sometimes precious memories and possessions destroyed, and we know that we need to act on that. And because we all represent the very small portion of the city that is directly impacted by that flooding, we're willing to take the large steps needed to address it. And in a world where that wasn't the case, you could very easily see a proposal to spend $1 billion over 10 years and tax everyone to do it, go down five to two in a city council where only the mayor and the one representative who represents that impacted neighborhood have a electoral reason to be concerned about it. So I think our system has produced good governance. It's produced a city government that has maintained a triple-A bond rating year after year after year, a city council that has, as the Vice Mayor said, become highly representative of the population as a whole across any number of demographic or geographic assessments. And I am disinclined to change it, and I've told voters that throughout my time running for council. And I think that, given that we have a council that continually comes from the people so democratically, so demographically representative, that also believes in the value of this system, I think that that's where we are and where we should stay.
Thank you. Next question, and I'm going to go to Councilman Aguirre. Are the train tracks in North Old Town that are no longer used going to be removed?
So a little bit, do we know, are they talking about CSX train tracks? So kind of a simple answer, they don't belong to us, they belong to CSX. And traditionally, the trains have, they have their own agenda, and they are private owners, and they will, we try and work with them as best we can. So no, not unless they choose to. Even with overtures from the city, they will likely say no, unfortunately. I don't know if anybody wants to add to that.
Councilman McPike.
Councilman Aguirre is correct. These are privately owned tracks, and CSX would have to be the ones to agree to remove them. But it's not just CSX. It is so difficult to lay down train tracks in the United States today, now that we are built out, that you wouldn't just have to get CSX. CSX would have to go and get approval from dozens of other railroad companies that don't own or even currently use these derelict tracks, that to agree that they will never see any use for them whatsoever, for them to get permission under sort of the rules that govern the removal of railroad tracks to take them out. We would like to see them get removed. There, you know, are also in some of these areas, they're running through some areas that have some contamination and have other concerns that removing them would have complications in and of itself as well. But it's not just a decision that would be made by the city or even just by CSX.
And I would just add that while the challenges seem insurmountable, Alexandria likes a challenge. And so we do have staff and residents, I think, from the Old Town North Alliance and others who continue to work with, try and work with CSX, write letters, have engaged attorneys. So we are continuing to advocate because we have a vision for that area, and that is not part of it. Vice Mayor Bagley.
And the final thing I'd just add is that the, actually, the PRGS team is going to be presenting at the Waterfront Commission tomorrow their waterfront park plans. And so for whoever asked this question and for those interested, I'd say tune in. It's 7:30 a.m. at City Hall tomorrow morning, but they'll be making a presentation that should touch on this as well.
Councilman Chapman. Has council received regular updates from Nova Parks on the changes coming to the Winkler Botanical Preserve? If not, why not?
So great question. They have not. One of the things that I've asked for is to actually have our representatives from Nova Parks come before us. Outside of the Winkler Preserve, they are going to probably have some leadership change at Nova Parks, and I want to have a conversation with them about that, as well as get them ready for a larger discussion on the Cameron Runway pool. And so hopefully having their executive director, the two representatives that we have, come to council. They haven't been to council in quite some time, and this is a perfect opportunity to engage them and be able to pull out answers to questions like these.
And I was just going to say, thank you, Councilman Chapman, for raising that. As a result of your prompting, an invitation has been extended, and they are expected to be before us on the 24th. Where to next? Okay, I'll come to, and I will say, some of these are long. We did get feedback that people would like their full comments read, so I am going to read them. I will say it's easier if you do shorten them and give us a clear question, but I will read them as they are written. And I'm going to send this one to you, Councilman McPike. It is important for the city and the housing authority to realize that seniors are currently living in the Elate building. While a deal may have been in the works, we learned about possible changes from the press. We have no idea if we have to move, if current amenities and services will change, and if we must relocate. What is the timeline and what assistance for those of us who live here receive? I will be watching this meeting online. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the person who submitted this question. I don't know if you were one of the residents who attended Tuesday's city council meeting, but we had an extended conversation with ARHA about this proposal that they had brought to us, asking the city to provide a loan guarantee of $56 million to support their purchase of the Elate building to move families, sorry, residents of the La Draye Senior Affordable Housing Building into the Elate while they renovate the La Draye. The questions you asked are very important, and I do not feel that we have received from ARHA sufficient answers to them in the course of this conversation. The discussion was long, there were promises made, I wouldn't say promises made, statements made that the filling of the building, which is currently only 18% at capacity, which is why the Elate was failing as a sort of financial entity, and was willing to be purchased by ARHA. ARHA is presenting that the filling of the building will allow them to bring those services that you have been promised online, and then to maintain them. They've also, you know, stated, let's see here, that they have been in discussion with the building management. They should have been in discussion with you. They should have been in discussion with the city council in a public way, earlier, in my opinion, than they have been. I have a lot of skepticism over the structure of the proposal that ARHA brought us. I think that some of my colleagues might have other issues that they would raise with it if you discuss it with them. But first and foremost, from the city's perspective, we have a commitment to the people in the La Draye building, that they should have a safe and affordable and respectful place for them to live. And that building has not been maintained in a condition that achieves that goal, which the city council last year voted to allow the complete redevelopment of that site into a larger, more modern, more suitable building for that population. That project, for a number of reasons, has been deemed infeasible by ARHA's board, and they've come to us with this solution of redeveloping the La Draye and moving citizens into the Elate, which, of course, then brings up the fact that 18% of the La Draye is occupied. You, as people who have purchased or rented units in the La Draye, sorry, in the Elate, have rights too. You have a skin in this game. So we want to make sure that you are treated well. But fundamentally, we also want to make sure that the city isn't left on the hook for a $56 million purchase if the finances of this ARHA approach to the Elate building do not pan out, do not work better than the private ownership model did. The city's budget, as we mentioned a minute ago, we have a triple-A bond rating. And that bond rating means that we get to spend a lot less money, borrowing money to build schools, to build rec centers, to build roads, and the infrastructure that we need, including the flooding improvements that we're doing around the city. So we have to be very careful about taking on debt and very, very attention, detail-oriented in assessing the dangers here in terms of the financing of this proposal. We're going to be looking into this. The bonds that the ARHA authority would need to go onto the market for in order to complete this purchase have to be requested by July 22nd. So that is the deadline of when a decision has to be made, is before July 22nd. The city is going to continue to raise questions with ARHA about the financing model, but also about the status of the residents in the Elate building today, the proposals for how to move residents from the La Draye into this building, what to do with the residents of La Draye who cannot move into this building, either because of the age requirement or because there aren't enough units in the Elate to handle the complete population of the La Draye. It's a very complex proposal. I think you were brought into it too late. I think we were brought into it too late. And it's going to be a sort of, I think, intense conversation between now and mid-July to determine how the city falls on this matter.
So I would just add to the resident who submitted this, please send us an email or a 311, because I think it's important for us to get you to the right person who can answer some of these questions and engage with you and other residents directly. I did want to just acknowledge a few specific things you called out, because we did ask this question directly on Tuesday. To your first question about whether or not you have to move, what was shared with us at the Tuesday public hearing, well, Tuesday council hearing, is that you would not have to move. I'm sure there's probably more questions you would have, but that was shared directly with us. The other question you had about whether or not the current amenities and services will change, what was shared with us is that the program that will be moving forward, if council supports this, is still being worked out, and that ARHA is still trying to think through what types of services and so forth would continue. But I think what I heard is that there is a commitment to continue services as well. And then the last question was around if you have to relocate, what is the timeline, and if there will be assistance? Again, my understanding from what was shared with us is that you would not have to. But again, please send us an email. We'll make sure we get you to the direct person who can answer any questions you have about your specific situation. And I'm going to try and also weave in questions from the audience, too. Councilman El Newby, should Alexandria invest in companies that have a proven track record of human rights violations, especially when that money should be going to the community?
So it's a very loaded question. Short answer is no, we shouldn't. However, it's not a black and white issue, and it's more complicated than that. It's not we're investing money in these companies that are going to the community. There are city employees' pensions that are being invested in pools that we don't have control over where these pools invest their money. So if we choose to divest, that's a long process that will have cost implications and that would take time, and it's not straightforward. And as a council member, I would not direct employees to invest their money in one way or another. So that's the short, that's essentially what it is.
Councilman Chapman. Israel has been denounced by the UN and the ICJ for its illegal occupation and ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people. Its leaders are the subject of active ICC arrest warrant requests over war crimes, as well as ongoing investigations into human rights violations. Why does Israel continue to have its own dedicated economic promotion entity funded by us as Virginia state taxpayers?
I think that is a good question, but unfortunately, it's a question for the state. I think this is their entity, not kind of a local one. And so your state tax dollars are the ones that are used for that entity. I would say in terms of pure economic development, I don't think any country should just have its own, particularly representing Virginia, should have its own promotion entity. I think there are definitely countries and relationships in probably most continents that we could have that would have a positive net economic development relationship for Virginians. And so, you know, in discussions I've had with state leaders and folks in the state delegation, I think there could be an opportunity to expand the relationships that we have. Virginia has not been shy about working overseas to bring jobs and opportunity to the Commonwealth, and I think that needs to expand.
Councilman Aguirre. With recent threats to deploy military force to northern Virginia, what direct action is the city of Alexandria planning on taking to protect residents in areas with large numbers of recent immigrant and primary Spanish-speaking families beyond not cooperating with ICE? When the sweep comes, what will our city have done beyond not helping?
So a lot of people know I'm originally from Los Angeles, and, you know, they've already been deployed there, to me unjustly and unlawfully superseding both the mayor and the governor, mayor of Los Angeles, governor of California. And if folks are not aware, the senior U.S. Senator from California, Alex Padilla, was forcibly removed, then thrown to the floor, and handcuffed in a federal building just a couple hours ago. You know, we try and keep things here locally, but there are things that are occurring across the river and across the country that, regardless of party affiliation, and if you are an apathetic voter and say, "It doesn't matter who's in there, everything's going to be the same," I want folks to know that that's not the case. Our constitutional rights, our democratic rule of law is currently under attack. If they are going to not only handcuff a sitting U.S. Senator and then lie about his actions, which is documented in video, an official statement from Homeland came out and said that the senator burst into the room, started yelling, did not identify himself, and then lunged at the secretary. That is completely false. As the video shows very clearly, the senator, who was in a federal building and rightfully in that building for a meeting, was informed that the secretary was having a presser a couple of doors down. He went to the presser to ask a question. He was then attacked by officers. He identified himself, they dismissed it, the secretary did not stop them, and then he was handcuffed on the floor. If that is how they're going to treat a U.S. Senator, how are they going to treat the most vulnerable people within our communities? Now, in Alexandria, we are very fortunate to have a robust network of nonprofits. And while I will not go into the details of what the nonprofits are doing or what the city's efforts are, I can assure the public that the immigrant community is very aware of efforts that are underway to make sure that individuals are protected and that they are aware of their constitutional rights. It is not illegal to tell anyone what their constitutional rights are, regardless of threats from this federal administration, even to myself and my colleagues to my left, saying that anyone... I'm a little bit emotional about this. I'm very angry to try and threaten elected officials, to inform people their constitutional rights, and then say that it is impeding federal law. It's absolutely ridiculous and ludicrous. So this city values our diversity, values equity, values inclusion. We understand the benefits of the immigrant community. And we will make sure that we do everything within our power to protect our residents, period. period.
Thank you, Councilman Aguirre. And I just want to say, we've gotten this question in a couple of different ways. I think my colleague said it best, "We will do everything we can and that is it." I also would hope that the community would understand that we're not going to sit here and tell you every strategy or action that the city is doing because at the end of the day, we are doing a lot, but we have to do that in the way that best protects our residents who are most impacted. So just because you do not hear it on a website or you don't see a billboard with everything that's happening, it doesn't mean that things are not happening. And so I just want to say that. Vice Mayor Bagley, can veterans with a 90% to 95% disability be exempt from personal property taxes or have the same exemptions as a veteran with 100% disability? If not, can there be some percentage off for veterans who are between 90% to 99% disabled?
Thank you for the question. And I just want to add one thing to those who say, "How can I help?" Because I second entirely what my colleague said, and I think he speaks, you know, for all of us really eloquently in what the mayor says. So I just want to throw out the last piece, which is like, so if you're asking, like, so then what can I do? I want to express that, like, we have organizations, that the immigrant-focused organizations, if they don't know you already, will be hesitant at this stage if you are not known to them. And this is something that was, I needed to be, you know, mindful of. So what I would encourage anyone to do who is not already working with an immigrant-supporting group is reach out to ALIVE, reach out to even the animal shelter. I mean, reach out to any organization in the city who supports people in need, senior services, and offer your help, offer food, offer time, because all of these other resources are going to be tapped into and those other groups are going to be able to absorb what you are offering in ways that a specific immigrant community group might be focused elsewhere at the moment. So I just wanted to share what I thought was very good advice that I got, you know, from that community. And then I will answer the housing question, which is, so if I understand the question correctly, and I invite my colleagues to jump in and correct me if I don't get this right, but the personal property tax exemption that flows to veterans is actually a state-level piece of legislation. And that's why actually it disproportionately impacts different cities and counties around the state. I know my colleagues down in Spotsylvania have a massive reduction in their revenue because of how many veterans retire there. So to the extent that there is to be a change in how that specific property tax exemption is done, that's something to speak to your state and delegate, your senator and delegate about at the General Assembly. Locally, that's Elizabeth Bennet Parker, Sharnell Herring, Alfonso Lopez, and Adam Evans. In terms of a local exemption, I'm not sure we even have the authority to do that. I know we do a senior-focused income-based exemption on personal property tax that we recently modified.
Well, that's property tax.
The property tax, property tax, apologies. So the short answer then, I think, is this is not something we can do locally, but it is something that I have already sent in a question to the city manager and our office of housing to follow up on.
And I'm blanking on the exact legislation, but I will say in our legislative package, maybe a year or two ago, we did have several military spouses reach out requesting support for their advocacy for additional exemptions, and that did pass through the General Assembly. And as soon as we got that authority, we did take that up. So I would just say, as we prepare to do our legislative packet again, let's keep this on, and if there are things we need to do to advocate to the state, I think there's general support to do that. Councilman, let's see, who haven't I gone to in a while? Councilman Kirk McPike, how can the city council help the accountability of city services of government, not sure what that, department such as the, okay, wait, let me try this again. How can the city council help the accountability of city services of government departments such as the Alexandria Recreation Department?
Well, thank you very much for this question. Sort of interacting with departments such as the Recreation Department is a large part of what we do on the city council. If you watched Tuesday's public hearing, sorry, meeting, we keep calling it a public hearing, it was a legislative meeting, one of the things that we had presented to us was the interdepartmental long-range work plan, which is how our Transportation Department, our zoning and planning departments layout for us what they've heard from us in terms of what we want to see them working on and the timelines for them to create, to finish those projects. They come back to us and they update us on this plan frequently, and we ask questions about how are things proceeding? How, you know, what are you thinking about in terms of this related to the parking proposals that we've asked you to develop? The Parks Department and the other departments will come before us in similar ways. They come before us every year during the budget process where we will ask them questions about, you know, the list of projects that they have in the CIP, the list of budget lines that they have. What is going on? We've heard this from residents about Ewald Park. Can we have more public hearings to discuss improvements to Ewald Park? Sorry, we should not have more public hearings. We need to move forward on the Ewald Park project. And so this is something that we do in that process. But day to day, each of us do this all the time. If you reach out to us through 3-1-1, we will follow up. We will forward emails to department heads who, if you've got a trash bin that's supposed to be installed, a city trash bin on your street that's supposed to be installed and it hasn't been installed, and you contact us, we will work through the city manager's office to work with that department to make sure that that trash can gets installed. If you're having an issue with parking problems in your neighborhood, we want to hear about it so that we can then talk with that staff to find out what's going on, get information back to you. But eventually, if it's a continuing or growing problem, bring it up at a council meeting in our system that allows us to give instruction to the city manager to take a different approach on something. So your feedback to us is key in letting us be aware of where the problem issues are in the city. And then we have a number of things that we do every year and every meeting to make sure that we're following through on those items and riding herd, I get a bit, on city staff to make sure that we're heading in the directions that we want to be headed. And if you aren't getting progress on things that you brought up to us, please contact me. I'm happy to help move things along.
Yeah. Excuse me, sir. I'm going to go to Councilman Chapman. Would you mind?
Let me, because I think I know where this question is going.
It's fine. I can answer it as well.
We'll get it, Tim.
So I think my colleague actually really said it very well. I think one of the things that has usually been done on council for any individual that has a specific issue within a department that reaches out to us, many times we will work with staff to find out about the policy behind a particular issue, sometimes request a meeting with staff, whether it's senior leadership or the manager, to kind of work through a policy issue. And if there is an opportunity for policy change, we'll bring it to the rest of council. You know, one member of council shouldn't be directing city departments in what they do, but I think as a whole, we can bring up issues in a broader sense to talk to the manager about how we can make sure accountability is happening in particular levels of government. So Jackie, what I'll do, I'll chat with you after this. That way, we keep the, so Jackie, if we can keep the program running, I will chat with you right after this.
Yes. Well, two parts. I think you're asking what the protocol is. We do have staff available. Yes.
You do. Yes, you do. That's correct. Yes, you do. We will.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilman El Nubi, to what extent will changes in federal funding affect food security programs in our city?
So again, it really depends on what happens with the federal budget and with the federal funding. Right now, again, there is about $50 million in funding that comes to the city, mostly in grants. So if some of these fundings get cut, we will have to make some tough decisions. So either we will have to cut programs or we will have to raise taxes. Now, when it comes to food security, we, again, the other thing is we have money in this budget to, we have a little bit of cushion in the budget that we passed, that if the cuts are not huge, we can hopefully fill in those holes. But if it's a big gap, then it becomes a problem. One of, the budget that we passed as well had money in there for food security, for food programs, so we can keep those going. So we didn't cut any of those programs. We funded them fully. And we also gave money to the Food Bank, I believe, or the Food Hub. The mayor put in the ad lead.
I'm going to go to Councilman Aguirre and then Vice Mayor Bagley.
And I think Vice Mayor McPike has handled, from the federal standpoint, I think he has a good perspective on this. But first of all, the Capital Area Food Bank is the largest deliverer of food in the region, and they're taking a big hit. As was mentioned earlier, if you have the ability to volunteer time with any of our food banks, if you have the ability to donate food, please do so. All of the food banks across the country are taking big hits. And the other thing that I was going to say is the USDA food program that feeds our students breakfast and lunch, we are very, very concerned with that. As a local government, we do not have sufficient funds to be able to step in if all of that money is taken away. We need a good state partner and we need a good federal partner. We will do everything within our power to try and make sure that we feed everyone in the city, but we cannot do it alone.
Okay. Vice Mayor Bagley?
Yesterday, I had the opportunity to be at the COG Board of Directors meeting, and Senator Warner was there, and he gave a breakdown on food funding and how it's going to play out at the states. And the thing I wanted to pass along is it's really ingenious a little bit, the way that they've done this. They haven't actually changed the eligibility for SNAP, and maybe, again, my federal colleague here will jump in, but they haven't actually changed the eligibility. What they did is they changed all the administrative processes around it to make it first a lot more expensive for the states to administer the program and a lot more burdensome. And so a good example, and as someone who works in, you know, Section 8 housing, generally in these programs, there's some flexibility about when you qualify. You know, every dollar you earn doesn't equal a dollar commensurate reduction in your benefits. There's sort of a range. And you only have to support, like in housing, you know, your income has to change by more than $200 for you to have a change in your rent. And part of that is a recognition that most people living in poverty also work hourly jobs. Their income every week is very variable based on the amount of hours that they worked and that were made available to them. And so what they've done is they've taken this program, which had some built-in sort of flexibility recognizing people's income changes week to week, and made it sort of zero tolerance. You have to report, I'm sorry. Sorry, we've got a note, we can't hear you. I've never been told in my life people couldn't hear me, so. But so it's just, just to kind of, since we have a wonky audience and a wonky city, I was blown away by that change, that effectively, you know, it's considered an error and it's a problem if your income is not reported essentially with every change. And that will wildly complicate and impact the ability of people who are otherwise eligible to collect SNAP benefits. And I hope I did that reasonably.
Yeah, I would just add a couple pieces because I think my colleagues have elevated so much of what's going on here. This is another area where we continue to push back and monitor closely. Some things to know about what this looks like in our city. We have about 12,000 households that have at least one person in their home receiving SNAP. The ALIVE, they served close to 20,000 people monthly, and only about 25% of those people are receiving SNAP benefits. So we know there's a lot of people who are already experiencing food insecurity that could be eligible and need additional supports who are not being served already. And so any cuts or administrative changes directly impact that group as well. The other thing that was being predicted from our regional food banks is that even with increases in philanthropy, they cannot sustain additional increases. The amount of money that comes from the federal government, when you think about the infrastructure that's required to be able to provide direct payments, to be able to respond as need goes up and down, our nonprofits, even with additional support, and the city, even with support, can't do that. The other thing, and my colleague Vice Mayor Bagley started to speak to this, and there was a webinar a couple weeks ago that talked about they're looking at shifting almost 70% of the administrative burden to the state. So if any state doesn't want to pick that up or doesn't have the capacity to pick that up, that means additional people who will be cut. So we are actively pushing back and have been working with our congressional delegation to let them know about the impacts here in Alexandria. Okay. Let's see. Why, let's see, who haven't I gone to? Oh, were you going to get in?
Oh, no. Y'all covered everything very well. Thank you. But please, support ALIVE and sign up to deliver meals on wheels if you have the time to do so. There are hungry people in our city and you can help them.
Why doesn't the city enforce the parking ordinances in regard to UPS, Amazon, and FedEx trucks that routinely stop in the street, numerous times on the same street, blocking traffic? The postal workers don't do it. They act as though they are delivering organs for transplants. Councilman Chapman?
I mean, just, let's be honest, as a logistical matter, I think the time that it would take to report said van and get somebody out there to actually get to it is not going to be enough time to actually catch them. I've actually witnessed this. I've actually tried to catch someone and tell on someone that way, and it did not work. And I did it frankly to see if that's possible. I see a hand raised, but what I'll probably do is chat with you after this about that as well, because I do think it's an issue. It's a very kind of flagrineness here, and I don't think we are the only locality that's dealing with that. We have a number of delivery drivers who choose not to use loading zones that we have set aside. What's the point of setting aside these spaces for people to load, people to get in and out if they're not going to be used? And so I think one of the things that a number of jurisdictions and regionally we probably need to do is really go after or go at the businesses that are telling their employees to do this, because that's what's happening. It's not that people are making this choice, they're being told that they can skirt the law and cause issues for people. So, yeah.
I saw Vice Mayor Bagley's hand go up, and then I saw Councilman Aguirre's hand go up.
Thank you. So just to, I agree with Councilman Chapman generally that enforcement is, through the police and through parking enforcement, be challenging. So two sort of related notes, we do need, development, I think, is doing a slightly better job, and at least is conscious. When we design and approve buildings now, just like we ask about, you know, tree canopy and stormwater, we're trying to envision better where will loading and unloading happen? Where would Uber arrive? And, you know, I know we've seen that as part of our presentations, part of our briefing. So to the extent new development is coming forward, I think it is conscious of this issue. And then the other thing I'll just put into the ether for the community is that if and when options for, say, you know, robot-style delivery, you know, those little guys on wheels that are in certain communities, I mean, just let's have an open mind. I'm not suggesting here I'm for that. I'm not suggesting that it's on the horizon, but I know it's one way in which certain communities are, you know, considering dealing with some of this. There are certain neighborhoods where maybe that style of, you know, it's a small device. I've seen them mostly on college campuses so far, but depending on what's being delivered. And for me, it's more of like an Uber Eats issue, less of a UPS truck and mail truck. I see it in my neighborhood more as just personal vehicles idling, you know, for Uber Eats deliveries and such.
Okay. Councilman Aguirre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I need to double-check this, but I'm pretty sure New York had or has some type of call-in line. You take a picture, as long as you got their license plate on there and show them that they're actively, you know, defying the law, double parked in a zone that they shouldn't be parked in. You send that in and they'll find them. I think we should look into that to see if we have the ability, the authority at the local level or if we need to go to the state. But I also agree with what my colleague said, we need to go federal level for some of these employers, right? Amazon comes to mind, and they're comes to mind, and their drivers are on a clock, right? It's unfair to the drivers that they're being clocked in this way, when, you know, we don't want them blocking traffic. We don't want them putting people at risk, because then someone's trying to cross the street and they can't see, because there's a vehicle double parked, or whatever it might be. So, you know, these vehicles really need to be pulling over into the loading zones, or what drives me crazy even more, is that there's four open parking spaces, and instead of parking in one of those spaces, they go and double park and do something crazy. And I mean, at the end of the day, this is for the safety of the drivers and delivery folks as well, because they're human beings, and they deserve the respect as well.
Okay. Councilman El Nubi, I'm going to come to you, and it's a public safety question, and I will also hand it to you, because it is a little long. But I am writing to you today with an urgent and growing concern regarding rampant trespassing and drug activity within the South Meadow condominium community, specifically the area bordering the Mount Vernon Shopping Center. This issue has left residents living in fear and directly impacts the safety and well-being of our community. For weeks, we have seen an increase in individuals trespassing onto our property, often using our community as a hiding spot for drug use. Residents have repeatedly called the police, providing concrete evidence, including video footage of individuals using drugs on the property, squatting on private patios, and even attempting to break into unoccupied units. Despite our efforts, the response from law enforcement has been deeply unsatisfying. We are consistently told to contact our property manager, even with compelling evidence of criminal activity. As tax-paying citizens and homeowners in a condominium community, we have the right to expect timely and effective intervention from our police department when our safety and our property are at risk. The lack of police action, even with undeniable evidence, is unacceptable and has eroded our sense of security. The problem isn't confined to our residential properties. Local businesses, such as Mama's Kitchen, are also being negatively affected by this unchecked activity. We are calling on you, our elected representatives, to provide immediate guidance and intervention to address this critical issue. We need your support to ensure that law enforcement takes this matter seriously and provides the protection our community deserves. What steps will the city council take to compel the police department to act, and what resources are available to help resolve this ongoing crisis that has left residents feeling vulnerable in their own homes?
Madam Mayor, my apologies to my colleague for interrupting. This is an unfortunate situation, but also unfortunately, this is in Fairfax County, not in the city of Alexandria.
I realized that after I got to the property.
We will be sure to pass this along to our counterparts within Fairfax County. I believe it's either Supervisor Lusk or Supervisor Stork that this should go to attention to, as well as Chair McKay.
Yes. I realized that after I got into it. And I was like, wait a minute. This isn't us, but we'll pass that along. You saved one. You saved a good one. I was like, Mama's Kitchen, I haven't been there. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a different one then. In a recent Alex Now article about the sale of 21 Old Town commercial properties, they quoted the owner as saying, "A sustained lack of retail construction, with no new inventory currently in progress, positions rents to continue their upward trajectory." Do we have a supply problem for retail space? How can we keep rising retail rents from displacing local businesses? Yes, that one's for you.
Thanks for the question. So, do we have a supply problem for retail space, and how can we keep rising retail rents from displacing local businesses across Alexandria? So, one of the things that we try to do when we have developments is do mixed-use developments. It's one of the best developments that we can have, because you add retail space, but also improves walkability and improves the quality of the neighborhood, because you have services right there. So, as we develop new buildings, retail space will occur. However, I'm not sure if we have a lack of retail space, but that doesn't mean rents will not go up. Rents are going up, because real estate's getting expensive. What we can do is work with our businesses to see how we can support them. And we have some programs, and AEDP has some programs for our businesses, to help incentivize our businesses to come to Alexandria, provide them help, help them with their business, with their books, with their revenues, to be able to stay and afford the rents that we have in Alexandria. But it's also, we're Alexandria. We're going to be more expensive than other places, because we're a destination. So that's also a factor to keep in mind when it comes to retail spaces. So, when it comes to supply, like I said, you know, as we develop, we're going to get more. But I don't know the data off the top of my head, so I can't tell you if we have a supply problem or not. But if the person who asked the question can reach out, and we can look into the data together and see if it's actually a supply problem, and then we can see what can be done about that.
Okay. And we have a couple others. Councilman McPike, Councilman Aguirre, Councilman Chapman?
So, retail's a challenge everywhere. A lot of the things that people use to go into a store in your own community and buy, you don't go into a store and buy, because they get delivered to you. In one of the trucks we were just talking about in a previous answer, because people are shopping at Amazon, or worse, are treating local stores like galleries in which to inspect an item, then going online and searching for a lower price. This is a challenge that everywhere is facing. Here in the city, we are building new supply of commercial spaces in a lot of the projects that we have in our pipeline. The Samuel Madden Homes redevelopment will have ground floor retail spaces in it. And there will also be quite a bit of retail use spaces in the PRGS site when it goes up, and the Landmark Mall site that's opening up on the West End. Old Town has a whole other set of unique challenges to it, in terms of the size of the spaces, the value of them. It is very hard for a local business to fill some of the spaces in Old Town, which are based on the existing historically protected buildings that are very large. Oftentimes, it is a J.Crew or a Banana Republic that can fill that space and afford it, whereas a local store might not necessarily be able to. We also need to do better about advertising and supporting our local businesses in areas like Old Town, which is why I'm supporting, I'm supportive of creating a Business Improvement District in Old Town to compete better for the retail and entertainment dollars that people in this region want to spend. I don't want them going across the bay to the fake Old Town they built in Maryland. I don't want them going to Arlington or Fairfax, even though those are beautiful places. We want them to come to our stores here, walking down King Street, enjoying our restaurants, buying in our stores, helping them to thrive more. And to do that, we need to be looking at what those areas are doing that we're not. They're advertising locally and very specifically targeting their commercial spaces through Business Improvement District-type programs, and we shouldn't be unilaterally disarming and not doing the same.
Councilman Aguirre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilman McPike and the comments he made. I would add, you know, to reemphasize, in Old Town, it's just difficult to build, right? Because I don't think anybody's going to be in favor of knocking down any of the historic buildings that we have. So, there's challenges there, the retail challenges that are happening, not just here, but nationally. I've been a big proponent of trying to preserve existing local businesses, and making sure that whenever we're doing redevelopment, we have some type of plan to try and bring those businesses back, whether it's within the new building or in the surrounding area. I was really proud that with the development at the corner of Glebe and Mount Vernon, the San Se and the Nacha, which is going to be 100% affordable housing building, the four businesses that we were displacing from that site, we found spaces for them within two blocks for all four of them. So that was a big deal for the city to be able to achieve that. And I made a big deal of it to try and make it happen, and we're going to try and continue to do that. I think the other thing that I wanted to point out, and, you know, we need some support from the chambers of commerce and some of the business groups. There's a lot of hedge funds and venture capitalist groups that are purchasing whole buildings. Given that we're in Virginia, and given laws around private ownership, it makes it very difficult. We do not really have a lot of authority around that. So they can basically just wait people out. They could raise rents, and then have it be vacant for a long amount of time, and we don't have any way to penalize them for that. So we need to be able to come together as local government, as business owners, as residents, and push back on some of this. We need some more authority from the state, and say that it's not okay to just try and wait local businesses out, which gives Alexandria its charm, just to put in a McDonald's or some other type of large chain. And I'm not trying to hate on the large chains, but it's like I said, I think some of what we value here in Alexandria is the fact that we do have these very successful local businesses.
And I think my colleagues are right in hitting on a number of points. I would only add, I think one of the things that, given what my colleague just said, you know, I think we can have the responsibility of trying to incentivize people to come to the city, come to Old Town. I think that's why you've seen investments over the years in the free trolley, that allows people to move a little bit more up and down parts of King Street, not just down by the water, but getting up to Upper King Street as well, and visiting businesses there. I think you've also seen the city invest in policies and even money that supports hotel development, because we want to have, we want to have visitors that are going to come and spend money in our shops, that are going to walk along the streets, and make sure that they're supporting our businesses. As my colleague said, we're going to have, we've seen a number of mixed-retail developments that we've had, but we've also had some conversions along King Street as well, to ensure that we have more people in downtown that are going to be using our neighborhood-serving uses, and our small boutique shops, and mom-and-pop stores. All of that, hopefully, is going to help incentivize people to come to those areas, or come to Old Town. As we, as we look across the city, I think we are trying to look at how we allow more pedestrian-friendly access in various parts of the city, so that we can create better spaces, because people want to be outside. They want to be in a space that allows them not only to visit businesses, but have an experience. And so, looking at the experience of Old Town, the experience of Delray, the experience of North Old Town and the West End, and parts of the West End, is part of that equation that is hopefully going to drive business, because I think what we can affect is not, not just pushing back against the challenges of the marketplace, but also incentivizing people to come here, so that our businesses feel that they get better bang for their buck in terms of the amount of customers.
Okay. Vice Mayor Bagley?
I would just add two quick things. One thing that I've been conscious of in new development coming forward is the size of the retail spaces being envisioned and making them smaller. You know, even big chain stores might be willing to have smaller footprints, given the, what, you know, Councilman McPike described. So something that we've been trying, I've been trying to be more conscious of, is as we develop new locations, if we have, you know, apartments over retail, thinking about smaller partitions within, which allows for smaller businesses to take advantage of lower rents. So part of this is in the design. It's how we build safer streets, too. You do it through design as well. And then the other thing I couldn't help but just point out is that the quote pulled here, you know, "sustained lack of retail construction, with no new inventory currently in progress, positions rent to continue their upward trajectory." You could replace retail with housing, and the bottom line, the premise stays the same. So just bearing in mind, I mean, when all of us talk about, you know, creating more housing in the city, the premise is the same. If there is no new housing being developed, it allows the current housing to continue to raise rents. They don't have to compete. So the, though this quote and this situation is retail-focused, the premise applies, I believe, equally across any kind of development.
Okay. Thank you. So the next set of questions, I'm going to go to Councilman Aguirre. And this is primarily focused on increasing access and transportation for persons with disabilities. And so, there's kind of, first part is their story, and then there's some specific questions. "The mishap in sidewalks in Old Town is astronomical. 311 has done their job with taking complaints and submitting them, but no one has stepped up to take projects on. Those who are disabled in wheelchairs, walkers, and strollers have been forced to get more than halfway down a street, only to turn back the other way to cross the street or to go to a different establishment. There are several city-run programs for those who are disabled with mental health challenges or in advanced recovery, but there are no city, there are not enough city vehicles equipped or available for those in motorized wheelchairs. Are there any plans to rectify this? There are too many single occupancy electric vehicles not in use, but no other for wheelchair vehicles for participants to attend events and activities or such." The second part of their question is, "Who monitors DOT transportation for persons with disabilities, and why is their personnel never available for town hall meetings? Does the city council ever sit on a call to see how the disadvantaged are treated by these personnel? Their personnel often challenge us to contact the city council, because they are not afraid or concerned with any of us." And then the last part goes back to their experience in Old Town, but talks about, there are businesses who want to put in wheelchair ramps, and they want to put down portable ramps, but they're being told by the city that they cannot because of the historic or landmark status.
First of all, thank you for the question, and bringing that to our attention. Extremely, extremely important. There's a lot of things to touch on here. First of all, with the ramps and businesses, I was unaware of that. We will definitely have a conversation with city staff around how we can improve that and make that a reality, because we have been trying to be compliant as a city, not just with developments, but our own roads and streets, in terms of ADA compliance. It is something that we take very seriously. It's part of our Complete Streets Program that we do. Every time we're going to redo a street or sidewalk, we look to try and make those improvements. The sidewalks, that's a really tough one. I have to follow up with staff on that. Whoever submitted this question, I will stick around, or I am easy to find. My email is myfirstname dot lastname at alexandria va.gov. My phone number is 703-215-5555. This is being recorded, so you could go back and look at it if I said that too quickly. In terms of specifically around vehicles, we actually just, at the last legislative meeting, approved staff to go after grant money for vehicles to improve the fleet that we have for, for wheelchairs and accessibility. I actually chaired the Access for All Subcommittee for the Transportation Planning Board, where we actually approved some of those grants. So I will definitely have my eye out on that, and am familiar with a lot of the issues that are facing the disability community. We do have our Alexandria Commission on Persons with Disabilities, which is a great venue to be able to advise the council as to some of these concerns. I would, I would urge the commission to send us a letter about this as well, so that we can put it on the, on the public record. And our dash buses should be equipped to be able to handle electric wheelchairs if they are not. Then again, this is something I need to double-check. When it comes to the conversations with DOT, I think we need to separate out, because I'm unclear through the question if we're talking federal DOT, state DOT, or local transportation staff members. It's not to give a pass to any one of those groups. It's just that each one has a slightly different role in how we interact with them. So, I'm looking forward to digging into this a bit more, because I have been working on paratransit for the last six years. I have a couple of friends who have brought this to my attention since I was first elected, and it is, I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor for her support in trying to move this forward. And we should be having a presentation to the council on paratransit in the next six to 12 months. I'm not unclear on when exactly, but this is a very loaded question, I think a very important question, and we will most definitely be trying to dig into the details and get some concrete responses back to you.
Thank you. And one thing I would just add to my colleague's point, we are trying to assess all across the city where we need to do better. And one of the things I'm really excited about is part of the City Hall project. If you look at City Hall, there's really only one entrance that you can use if you're a person who uses a wheelchair, or as mentioned, strollers or other motorized forms of transportation. And so, actually, part of the project is being able to make entire City Hall more ADA accessible, and actually, I can't remember, if it's, it's either raising the sidewalk or lowering the other piece, but it'll be one level, so that it really becomes the people's hall, and anybody can access it no matter where you are coming from. Okay. Vice Mayor Bagley. "Over the last two and a half months, since Israel blocked all aid to the Gaza Strip and the Trump administration took over limited aid distribution, conditions in Gaza have become even more dire. The entire population is starving, including infants, and people are queuing up hours for food while being shot at by the IDF. Over 50,000 people shot at by the IDF. Over 50,000 people are dead. Despite this, the United States is still sending weapons to Israel, paid for with Alexandria's tax dollars. With this context, why haven't you legislated divestment from Israel on a city level?"
So a couple of things. My colleague, Councilwoman Anubie touched on this, on the prior question on this topic, which is, there's, there's a difference between tax dollars and our pension investment and our general investment strategy. If you are upset with the use of your tax dollars, your income tax specifically, which Alexandria does not request, you should address that to your congressman, Congressman Byer, to Senator Warner, to Senator Kane, who are making use of your, you know, federal income tax and those dollars. Separately, with regard to legislating divestment from Israel on a city level, you know, we got a question earlier about companies that sell certain products. I'm not aware of any direct investment in the country of Israel by the city of Alexandria. I think the questions we've gotten and the more broader inquiries have been about our investment approach and the extent to which our investment package includes companies that sell weapons. With that, I will say, we have a, we don't invest our tax dollars. We are investing, again, as was referenced, this is a pension fund. This is a retirement fund that is part of a larger package that we invest in from the state. We have a fiduciary obligation to our employees to return on that investment for them. So I think the premise of the question, I understand what's getting at here. I understand the idea of investing in companies that deliver weapons, but I don't believe, and I invite any of my colleagues to correct me, that we are directly investing and sending Alexandria tax dollars to Israel. With regard to, again, our investment approach, what I believe, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but what I believe she has expressed, and several of us have expressed, is a willingness to address our investment strategy, but we are not specifically currently examining a divestment in specific countries or specific products, specific companies that produce products. And again, I invite my colleagues to correct, you know, if I'm, if I'm misstating sort of the realities of our investment in our pension fund, but I think that's the factual sort of context for this question.
Councilwoman Anubie, "Street safety. Speed bumps for South Lee Street, the 100 to the 500 blocks, five blocks. In the six years, there have been several big accidents on our residential street. One car flipped over and totaled another car. Two more cars on two separate fully documented accidents. Our neighbor was hit by a car. This is not normal for a residential street." There isn't a question at the end, but I think they're getting at, would you support speed bumps for this street?
I would support whatever safety mechanism that would reduce what's happening. I mean, it's sad what's happening. It's unacceptable, of course. Street safety is one of our top priorities. Vision Zero is a plan that City Council has, having zero fatalities by 2028, I believe. So we're moving that direction, and we examine and take street safety seriously. So when situations like that happen, our staff would go and examine the area and look for safety mitigations. There are several, I mean, speed bumps certainly is one of them, but, you know, there are other mechanisms, depending on what the street design looks like, that could occur to improve street safety. So we, certainly something our staff can look at, can examine and look at what kind of, what kind of mitigation efforts can happen there to address the speed and to address these accidents that are happening. There are, like I said, there are more than just speed bumps. There are other ways there. I can't, I don't recall all of them right now, but some of them are like shorter, shorter crossing distances, for example, right? Sometimes they, they make the street narrower, whatever. So there are so many other ways, and we have engineers and professionals on staff that do this for a living day to day. And I've seen from personal experience, several 311s that came to us, and staff would look at it and come up with a solution. So whoever submitted that question will, I mean, staff would certainly look into this, and if you want to reach out to us to personally follow up on that, we'd be happy to.
Vice Mayor Bagley, and then Councilman Chapman.
No, I appreciate the question, and I actually had an opportunity to share it with staff to try to dig into this a bit before the town hall. And I think what the data and what I want to share sort of the broader audience is, is that first, speed did not appear to be the primary cause of the accidents that this resident is experiencing and has witnessed, which, which absolutely happened. There were, you know, there were some, a documented crash in 2021, a documented crash in 2022, but they both involved, you know, individual driver actions failing to yield, failing to stop. And from a, from a city resources and perspective, the city had over 800 crashes in 2024, two fatal crashes, 31 severe injury crashes, and 260 minor injury crashes. Now, that does not, you know, minimize, you know, what this resident's experienced or the accidents that happened there, but it does unfortunately inform where the focus of our projects, you know, are at high crash corridors, at corridors of crashes involving speed. You know, for every five or 10 miles an hour higher that an accident happens, the fatality rates just are exponentially higher. So I think this street sort of sadly has a lot of the physical structures that create safer environments. It's narrow, there is parking on them, it stops every block. So there's a lot of structures that we would naturally look to do. Having said all that, I did pass along the question. The city's Neighborhood Transportation Improvement Program provides an additional opportunity for residents to look into unique solutions. But I did just want to indicate for everybody who sort of hears the question and, you know, is rightfully sort of upset by it, that the city does track these things and was aware of these, but, but does have to prioritize high crash and high-speed corridors.
I'm going to stick with transportation, and I will just go to you, Councilman Chapman. "I am very concerned about the increase in traffic and the lack of parking due to increasing density inside Alexandria City. For example, South Columbus and South Alfred already have extremely heavy traffi, traffic during the morning and afternoon rush hours, as is its way around South Washington and Route One traffic. There are two large apartment buildings being built. As it is, there is limited parking at times which are not policed, and individuals rolling through stop signs to get to the lights. In addition, large trucks are also sometimes used to street. An issue with parking as well is the patchwork of parking restrictions or lack thereof. Some spots have no time restrictions, some only Monday through Friday, some until 8:00 PM, and some until 11:00 PM. I think a solution to the traffic issue would be to make South Columbus and South Alfred Street one-way in opposite directions, like Henry and Patrick. I also think putting signs restricting truck traffic would be beneficial, as I have seen in other parts of the city. I would like to see parking time limits actually enforced and have them be consistent throughout the city, or at least in each quadrant. It is frustrating that I pay for a parking sticker, along with my real estate taxes, and I can't find parking within a few blocks of my house. I also think that directional traffic would assist in the safety of streets. I have been hit crossing South Columbus, and I was in the crosswalk with the light, and I have had close calls while in the crosswalk on South Columbus where there are stop signs. The increasing density will only further strain the limited parking resources and traffic safety."
All right. So let me work through this. I think one of the things that, I don't know if everybody's going to agree with me on this, but I do think that we are seeing more and more drivers that are not paying attention, speeding, and even though we have spent probably millions of dollars in trying to change behavior by changing the roadway, we continue to see this across the region, not just in Alexandria. And so having conversations at the regional level about how do we enforce, how hard do we enforce, and how much does it cost, and what's going to actually change behaviors for individual drivers. As my colleague said on the last question, you know, a number of these incidents, and even the incidents in the question, come because of individual driver actions. And so at the end of the day, that is really, to me, what we need to get at. If we are really going to see holistic change by drivers across the region, obviously, that's a very hard thing and a hard thing to actually change. But if we are talking about stories like this, stories like the last question, that's really what the answer needs to be. I think a number of jurisdictions are looking how we change the roadway. What do we add to the roadway? How many, how many signs we put? Do we change intersections? How do we slow speeds and all of the like? But at the end of the day, it's really the drivers that need to adhere to the roadway and the roadway changes to actually provide that, that level of safety. I think in terms of the directional changes for the streets, I think, you know, I'll talk to staff about that. I haven't been one to support that. I know we had a project, I want to say, in North Old Town, where we looked at street changes directionally, and I think what, how that could work or not work is always an interesting conversation. But I don't kind of fear that conversation, especially as we do see rush hour traffic in that section, and we need to try to figure out if we are going to have more buildings and people in that area, how do we make sure not only local residents, but the folks that come through that area can quickly get through and not pose as many congestion issues. I will say on the issue about trucks, I think that is something we definitely can chat with staff about. What are the truck routes? How are we providing signage for truck routes in the city, and how are we enforcing truck routes in the city? I live on a street that is not supposed to have trucks, and routinely I see big trucks going through that area. And so additional questions about how we make sure truck routes are followed, I think is definitely a valid one. Trying to make sure I hit everything. One here. I think I did.
Okay. I think this topic has been addressed, but we made a commitment to ask every question, so I'm going to come to you, Councilman McPike. "As we see weaponized and military violence used against protesters in LA, tear glass, rubber bullets, will the council commit to divesting the city from weapons manufacturers like North of Grumman, Lockheed Martin, and Lockheed Martin, who manufactured weapons used domestically and abroad?"
Yeah, I do believe that we've answered this question a number of different ways. The funds that we invest are there to ensure that we are receiving the return that we need to support our retirees, and not just our retirees, our operations of the city, funds that we have, free flow cash, we don't just sit it in a bank. We invest it so that it is, it can grow some before we have to make use of it. And I don't think, and I don't know if there's a majority on council, to restrict our options on how we invest our money in a way that could impact the results that we need in order to ensure that we can take care of the people who've worked their entire careers to support the people of Alexandria and are deserving of the retirement benefits that they have earned. Part of what we do in the city is that we are very careful with the funds that we have to ensure that we are getting the best return on our dollars, so that we can pay for the programs that we need, support the people in our city, who are the very folks who would be targeted by this federal administration. We are right across the river, obviously, from Washington, DC. A couple of days ago, the, there was an announcement online that they're planning to send more militarized troops into five loc, five cities that they listed across the country, and one of those cities was Northern Virginia. I mean, yeah, this administration doesn't really know what it's talking about in most cases. But that doesn't change the fact that the danger that they represent to our community is real, and so we need to be as prepared as we can be. We need to be working as thoroughly as we can with the nonprofits that Councilman Aguirre mentioned, with our local LGBTQ community, which is also being targeted by this administration, and being prepared to support our schools if they have the $30 million in their budget that is drawn from federal sources, cut away because they refuse to abandon the trans kids in their classrooms. It's a multifaceted fight against this administration, and I want to make sure that we have every resource available to, at our disposal, to make sure that we win it.
Councilman Anubie, "Is there anything council can do to keep Alexandria from being a city for the very rich and the very poor? Alexandria is my home, and I love this city, but I feel like I am being priced out of retirement."
So there are things that can be done. There are things that are being done. So some of the things that we can do when it comes to prices of housing is to improve our housing programs and our assistance programs. And we've done that. Last year, actually, my colleague, my colleagues put in an ad lead to the budget, which improved the exemption that seniors on fixed incomes get from property taxes, because we know it's a problem. I mean, this question is not, I've heard this before on the doors. A lot of times, when I met seniors at the doors, they would tell me, "I'm living in a house that's worth a million or a million and a half, but I don't have that kind of income. It's just these houses appreciated over time, just like real estate is, but when you're on a fixed income, it's hard to pay these property taxes." So having these kind of programs to help our seniors is important. Also, having programs like the Free Dash, so you don't have to spend money when you're moving around the city, especially if you're a senior. And the older you grow, the less likely you are to drive, so you can rely on the dash bus and don't have to pay money, so that would save you money. Now, when it comes to the price of how, the prices of housing, there's a supply and demand factor. So we heard earlier about density, about developments. It's important to try to affect the supply side. It's important to continue to build and develop housing. Now, of course, smartly and in a smart way, try to have the density around metro stations and around, you know, transit oriented development and around transit lines and transportation lines as much as we can, but also the more supply we add, that should help with the demand. We have millions of millions of housing unit shortage all around the nation, but in this area in particular, this area is a very hot commodity. People want to live here, and the housing growth, the growth in housing and the growth in development has not kept up with the amount of people that are coming to this area and want to live in this area, and that's why it's getting expensive. The other thing we are doing in our city is we have collective bargaining agreements with our employees and the different departments, the police department, the fire department. The schools are about to do one. We have a fourth one, I'm forgetting, but we have unions, so employees can bargain, can get better pay and better benefits to be able to live in our city. So that's something we're doing. So if our, you know, people who want to live and work in the city, they have that benefit. The other thing we're doing, and just last month, we broke ground on an affordable housing development that would help our teachers, help our first responders, help people who are, you know, making less than $100,000 or $80,000, so they can live in our city. It was about a 94, it's going to be a 94-unit building on Duke Street, an affordable housing building. And that's not the only one. There are others that have broken ground. There are others that are under the pipeline. And these affordable housing buildings also help to accommodate our residents who cannot afford the market price units that are getting more and more expensive.
Okay, Councilman McPike?
Yes, thank you. I just want to expand a little bit on what my colleague said, because everything he said was right. Those are all steps we are taking to help address the cost of living. And when it comes specifically to housing, it is all about supply. It is about supply and variety. And one of the things that the previous council did was we passed zoning for housing, which is going to add housing supply. We're already seeing, we just approved the first building in the city to use one of the zoning for housing tools. But it's also going to allow the creation of different kinds of housings in neighborhoods across the city. Places that could only build a single-family home of a certain size and type will be still, still be constrained to the same size limits of the building, but now that building can have up to four units in it. This means that in neighborhoods throughout our city, we can see a sprinkling of more affordable, smaller homes, which can be options for people who want to stay in Alexandria, want to live in this wonderful community that they love, but cannot afford their current home, or do not need all the space that their current home has. They can find a place in their neighborhood, going to the same stores they go to, seeing the same friends they see, enjoying the same restaurants they enjoy, through finding one of these homes that we hope to be, we expect to be built under the zoning for housing program. It's an important, it's an important tool that we put in place. I'm very proud to have supported it. If you look at the city of Austin, Texas, it's a city where rents and housing prices are falling, because they took steps to supercharge housing construction. We know that housing prices come down to supply and demand. We know that housing prices come down to supply and demand. The demand is there. We have not kept up on supply, but we are taking steps to try to address that.
Okay. So Councilman Al Newby wanted to get back in here, and Councilman Chapman also wanted to talk to this one. What I was saying to this group that I'm going to say over here is we still have several more questions, and there's only 20 minutes left. So if folks can keep their questions, I mean, keep their answers short, I want to make sure we get to everyone. So Councilman Al Newby, Councilman Chapman.
Yeah, real quick.
Councilman Aguirre.
One more thing, economic development, economic development. Because the problem in Alexandria is we're relying too much on residential property taxes because commercial tax base is shrinking, because of office space is shrinking. So we had an economic development summit last month. We're working really hard to bring investments to Alexandria so we can grow our commercial base, so to relieve the pressure on our residential tax base. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Chapman.
So I'll keep it kind of very direct. I think one of the issues I've been kind of focused on is state support. I think one of the challenges for Alexandria that's very specific is that we have old infrastructure that needs tax dollars to be updated. Right now, those tax dollars are coming primarily from you. And I think there's a conversation, an argument to be made that the state should be chipping in money, more money to assist localities, not just us, but other legacy systems like Lynchburg and Richmond in that work. We are building a number of schools and a number of municipal buildings. That is probably the biggest in the last 10 years, probably some of the biggest amount of building that we've been doing. And so another state issue is that we have some of the oldest, frankly, Virginia has some of the oldest school buildings in the nation. And so making sure the state understands that it's not a locality issue, it's actually a state issue. A lot of your tax dollars, as we've heard from a number of questions, are going to the state for their use. They should be coming back to the locality for our use. And that's not happening in Alexandria. I want to say our, I think it's close to 80% of your dollars go down to the state and never come back. And so we are getting, in my belief, unjust return on our investment in the state. And we have state-level issues that need to be dealt with, including housing. And so getting the state to give additional funding and better flexible policy as it relates to housing construction is part of it. As we talk about development, one of the areas that we are focused on is planning out the various parts of the city that have been underdeveloped in the past. And that's, one of those is Landmark. And so when Landmark reaches its full development potential, we have the opportunity to lean on more revenues that will hopefully even out with the services that are being provided.
Okay. Councilman Aguirre.
Okay, rapid fire. So affordable housing, our allocation, we raised that to a full penny. We have dedicated a meals tax, a full percent from that. We've been working with the faith community to leverage the land that they have to be able to build affordable housing there. And we have also shown a national model by being able to build affordable housing on top of our firehouse, which we're also planning to do in Landmark. So we have been very, very creative in Alexandria with the ways that we try and bring forward some of these projects across the city. And then the last thing that I want to mention is just the realities that we're dealing with right now. Construction costs have gone up, labor has gone up. The current administration and their immigration policies are not helpful. The tariffs are extremely unhelpful, the volatility in the market, the cost of steel, the cost of wood, everything. What developers and builders want is some type of stability to know what the prices are going to be. And then they can come to us and have more stable ideas of what they're trying to build and how to build it. And then we can ask of them what we want to see.
Okay. I'm going to stay with you, Councilman Aguirre. Why has the city thus far failed to take any action in response to the Human Rights Council's recommendation to divest from companies that enable and profit from the genocide in Gaza and apartheid against the Palestinian people?
First off, not to be in any way dismissive, all of our boards and commissions are advisory. It is up to the council whether or not to take up anything that any of those boards or commissions send to us. And then secondly, I think we've answered this question in a variety of ways, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Bagley, the Robinson Landing and the PRGS sites both contain heavy contamination. How does the mayor and the city council see themselves involved in this issue? Old Town North residents have been requesting, have requested a working group with HRP to address health and safety concerns, but was told it was not possible.
Thank you. The, so the way it's phrased, how does the mayor and city council see themselves involved in this issue? I would say deeply. We will actually be taking up Robinson Terminal North this Saturday at our public hearing. I can tell you that as a servant of the waterfront commission, I think we've had at least four briefings on that. I have walked the site with the mayor. You know, we have walked around it to talk about it. I live proximate to both of these projects, so deeply invested, deeply aware. Wanted to just say a few things for anybody watching here, listening, who maybe isn't as familiar with the project. You know, Robinson Landing and the PRGS site, that's the former power plant at the far north corner, eastern corner of the city. And Robinson Terminal North is effectively where, right now, Alex Renew, it's where Hazel sort of finished her journey. And Alex Renew is working right now. And then across the street is an empty warehouse, well, a storage warehouse facility. And so when we refer to Robinson Terminal North, we're talking about to the west, the redevelopment of the warehouse, and to the east, the development basically above and next to the Alex Renew site. So that's just some context. In terms of the remediation of the project, another just quick background I'll provide is this is not a superfund site. We've had some questions and some concerns raised about that. It was examined and identified decades ago and ruled out as a superfund site needing that level of remediation and federal examination. So that sort of leaves us with the Virginia, the Virginia program, VDEC. It's the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, does a voluntary remediation program, VRP. And I think what I want to assure this resident and anybody else who's interested in this project is that we have been using our contaminated lands program process for years in other situations involving contaminated lands. For what it's worth, this isn't the first time, and it probably won't be the last. Robinson Terminal South, Potomac Yard, Carlisle, Cameron Station, and the Vulcan Materials Storage Site all went through this voluntary remediation program in their process, and the city monitored them and participated in it. So I want to give some assurances that there is an existing program. It has been used previously. We will apply it here. With regard to specifics of this program, there's at least two conditions that have been proposed that you'll hear us talk about this weekend, that do request and provide for specific communication methods to be provided to Old Town North residents, updates to be provided on a website, the actual remediation plans, the hazardous safety plans, the haul away plans, and if I'm forgetting anything, you know, jump in. So we will be talking about all those things this Saturday. Many of us have been to the site, have been involved to date, and we will be abiding by and holding our staff and the vendors and the developers to our historical process.
Okay. Councilman Aguirre.
Vice Mayor Bagley went into way more detail than I would have. I would say, we're doing it on Saturday. Come check it out if you're interested. And if you want a preview, go ahead and watch the recording of the planning commission. They dive deep into those details.
Okay. There are 10 minutes left, four questions. Okay, team? Here we go. All right. So I'm going to go to Councilman Chapman. What specific efforts are being made to address the increasingly vacant square footage of commercial office space in Eisenhower East and the Carlisle area? In particular, the vacant space at the PTO. Specifics, please, not generalities.
Well, so specifically for PTO, I know ADP has met with GSA, I believe. When we discovered the issue of vacant space at PTO, I believe former Mayor Wilson met with them as well. As you probably know and probably have heard in the news, GSA is in a much different space right now. And so there are significant challenges, not only to short-term space for PTO, but the long-term lease of PTO is a question as well. And so getting GSA to give the local government opportunity and access, and frankly, private developers an opportunity for that space has been met with resistance, shall we say? And so that's, unfortunately, there's not very good information to pass along on that particular issue, but that is one that we continue to check in and work on and work with the development community to try to make some sense of. For the kind of more general east Eisenhower area, we've seen or will see conversion of office space over by the federal courthouse. That is coming before council relatively soon. What you've also seen is in front of council, an extension of approvals for projects in that area because developers are still struggling with funding and the economic landscape, whether it's tariffs and labor and such. And then we have seen ADP working with businesses that have wanted to move, and we don't talk about that as openly, but we have been able to keep some of those businesses in that particular neighborhood, even though they've looked at regional or national searches. And so even though we do see emptying of some of that space, I think one of the challenges we are, we have always seen with the Carlisle area is how to keep many of the smaller mom and pop type businesses thriving in that section of the city. And so as we continue to build out Carlisle, particularly to the south, we hope to have, as I talked about with the earlier question, have more people in that neighborhood that are going to take advantage of neighborhood serving uses.
And I would just add to that one, we have also started to engage in conversations with some of our associations to see sort of how we can support them if they are looking for different space options, but also how they can work to encourage their employees to go to whiskey and oyster and the other businesses in the Carlisle area for happy hours or engagements or meetings, just to continue to keep people feeling like it's a place that is lively and engaging, but also a place that brings business to our local businesses. All right, Councilman McPike, I'm coming to you. What can we, what are we going to do to better support our developmental disability commission?
Well, this is one of our commissions that serves an important group of people in our city. We've been investing in services for folks with developmental disabilities. Our schools have been investing in that. We've been supporting those investments. Our Department of Community and Human Services provides services, including workforce development training for folks in this community. We continue to provide investments into that. The commission is, like all of our commissions, an advisory one that gives us advice on things we need to look at, issues that need to be raised, and we take those and we try to act upon them. So if there are members of that commission watching tonight, please be in touch with us. Let us know how we can be of greater support to this important community. And if you're not a member of a board and commission in the city of Alexandria, please consider signing up and joining one because we take these commissions very seriously and we appreciate the input they provide us on these important matters.
Okay. Vice Mayor Bagley, I'm going to come to you on this because I think you started it earlier, but it's a different framing of the question. Even if Alexandria says it doesn't actively assist ICE, the fear in immigrant communities is real. What are we going to do to back that up with stronger protections and to build community trust?
We build community trust in part, I think, in many of the ways that Councilman Aguirre spoke to. We call this thing out honestly by what it is. I mean, this is designed to make people afraid, designed to intimidate them. It is unlawful. We name these things, and I applaud the way that his answer earlier named these things. If a sitting senator or if, you know, is not safe from, you know, being arrested, being asked to present papers, then none of us are. And I think it is going to be increasingly incumbent upon elected officials and people in positions of power to call these things what they are as they happen and not allow basically you to be told not to believe what you are seeing. What you are seeing is a real attempt to make wholesale groups of people in our community feel unwelcome. And what so many of us love about Alexandria is that it is welcoming. We gave our LGBTQ plus proclamation, you know, we are a place that is inclusive. And so I know these are words, but I think sometimes they're important words to express and to say clearly in these moments. We meet frequently, I will say many of us, with our sheriff to reaffirm, you know, how we want to see, you know, his department behave in these circumstances. We meet frequently with our police department. We encourage them to clearly identify themselves. One of the tactics that is being used right now is people are in masks, they are not in identifiable uniforms, they are not identifying themselves. And I can tell you tonight, any of you could identify the police officers in this room without them raising their hands or identifying themselves. They have patches on. Our sheriff's deputies do the same thing. We want to be very clear about that. We can continue to encourage even our city employees, many of whom are here tonight, to wear their badges, to wear city branded materials, to make it clear who we are and who we represent. That might not be the practical answer the mayor's looking for, but I think it is a way that we can build more trust. And again, I want to encourage anybody watching to give of their time, their funds if they have them, to resources seeking them, because to the extent people can't leave their homes to buy groceries, we need to find a way to get them groceries. To the extent childcare is a challenge, to the extent transportation is a challenge, there are ways that we can help people, and not all of them can be governmental. Government isn't always the fastest. And you as a neighbor, you as a community member, you as a volunteer sometimes can be the best lifeline that a marginalized person in your community has. So I hope to stand up and continue saying these things. I take a lot of inspiration from my colleague's words earlier. And we want, we want you to know that you are welcome here, and we will call these things out for what they are, which is unconstitutional infringements on the due process of any human person in the city of Alexandria.
And I will just say, if we take anything from Councilman Aguirre's answer earlier and Vice Mayor Bagley's answer, I think the bottom line we would want everyone to know is while government can't do it alone, everything this council can do, we will be doing. So, final question. I'll throw it out there, and I'll let you guys choose who answers it. No, it's fine. Sure, I'll take it. What housing programs are in place to help people on social security disability buy a home or build a home on a low and fixed income? So I would say there's a couple different ways I'll tackle this. One is I know that through our Office of Housing, we have been working with partners like ARHA through their Family Self-Sufficiency Program in order to provide homeownership support as well as different trainings and resources in order to help people build their capacity for homeownership. I'd say on our work and that we do around housing supply, we are trying to make sure that we are both increasing our supply of rental units, but also affordable homeownership opportunities. And so there's been several recent projects where we've actually been able to secure homeownership opportunities at much deeper levels of affordability. And then we have also looked at ways to increase down payment assistance and other supports. One of the things that I've been curious and looking at, if we have the ability or state authority to do, is are there ways to work with property managers that as people pay rent, a portion of that rent can also, in other communities, they've set up funds where like a portion can go into a fund, and when you move out, you're able to use that fund for your own down payment assistance. So as you're building credit, you're also building resources to go out and be able to build a home. So as part of our housing master plan, I can tell you that this is a topic that has come up, both in terms of how do we expand homeownership overall, but how do we make sure we are ensuring that we are getting homeownership opportunities don't continue to be out of reach for our lowest income individuals? And I think we'll be getting a package of potential policies that we can explore and vote on as part of that plan, which will come before the council this fall. With that, it is eight o'clock, and we covered every single question. I want to thank you for your time, for those of you who are in the room, but also for those of you who are watching online. I also want to thank our staff. I know this is a lot of time that goes into making this so that we can just show up and answer questions. So thank you for all of your work that has gone into this. Thank you for the staff in the rec department at Charles Houston for staying longer, staying extra and helping support us as well. And then finally, I think many members of the council offered to stay after for a little bit if you have additional questions or clarifications about the questions that you asked. So thank you and good night. So, thank you and good night.